Uh, can we take our seats, please?
And the guy from that John Eagle burn.
I don't know. Almost think that's a mobile warehouse there. Not look out, shelter.
Good evening once again, this is the agenda of the regular board meetings, President and Board of Trustees, Lieutenant of Burnham, County Illinois, today is March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. This time when the uh, the president will call a role in the app of the village.
Trustee Cap?
I'm here.
Trustee Hodges?
Here.
Trustee Garcia? Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrooks?
Here.
And we have a one president who is standing for the President of the Lees, and he needs to turn his body.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we open the meeting to the public, if you have anything to address to the board, if you would please, uh, stand up and give your name, limit your comments for three minutes, please, then we will, uh, then we will go from here. At this time, I will ask for a motion to open a meeting to the public.
Motion open your meeting to the public?
The motion will go by trustee Hodges, because we have a second, please.
I'll second it.
A second by trustee. Yeah.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Right, motion passed, thank you. Are there any public comments you would like to address the board?
Maria Isabel Muñoz, um, in January twenty-eighth on coffee and conversation, a woman said Burnham was known for their strict cops. However, the ca- the crime in Burnham has obviously raised, and now that mostly everybody has a home security camera, I was convinced the crime will easily be solved. When I asked a Burnham cop if they had been able to arrest these criminals caught on camera, his response was no, because they are not clear. For the past months, I've been seeing new videos of Burnham crime and realized the residents are not sharing the footage to the cops anymore. Because according to them, cops don't do anything anyways. If residents lost trust in our cops, would you recommend the residents to conceal carry in order to protect our property and selves? I also asked you if Burnham had gang bangers. You said, we have wannabes. If we need to protect ourselves against these wannabes, would you support the residents even if these criminals are minors? Or do you support the Second Amendment? I grew up in South Chicago and I feel like I'm back. Also, once again, to the trustees that are running, um, I'm doing an interview with SS Action, with, with the questions I provided over a month ago. Um, it's hard to know what our trustees represent if they don't talk to us. I will be available to interview after the meeting if you change your mind. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Any other public comment? I will ask for motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion for by trustee Richardson. Will we have a second, please?
I second.
Second by trustee Hardy.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks, yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Meeting is now closed to the public. As far as, um, gang bangers go, um, I'm not aware of Burnham having any gang bangers. We certainly want to keep our community as safe as possible for our residents, and, uh, that's something that we come aware, and we will certainly, uh, you know, try to take some appropriate action to get it under control or made or reduce it. Um, we as officials cannot and will not authorize anyone, can't authorize anyone to, get a concealed carry, that's something you would have to make that decision on. Would that be correct, Officer Cooley?
Sure.
No, you're correct. You answered it correctly.
Right, so, um, I mean, that would be an individual decision, um, that the person would have to make as far as they wanted to become a concealed carry or not. So, if you felt that it was something that you needed to do, then that would be a decision that you would have to make individually. Would not have any making to which the village department, you know, since the village department would not be authorized to give you that type of, uh, okay, so it would have to go to a different, uh, higher authority. Um, the, uh, well, spring has arrived upon us, so we are asking, uh, again, if the people would begin to, uh, clean up at the alleys, but see some people are breaking the yards, and that's a good thing, and, uh, the homeowners start picking up the yard, where it's April the first, I mean, and, uh, so, you put it out there, we're picking up, and it has to be in paper bags, have to be in paper bags, which are biodegradable, when they go into the landfill, and they will not accept plastic. If you put it in plastic bags, they will not pick it up. So, you see plastic bags being in the alley for six months, then that's why, they do not pick up anything in plastic bags. So, it has to be in paper bags. So, that is, uh, all I have for the mayor's points, so, sorry, goodnight. Oh, and also, we had mentioned on, uh, on May the twentieth, I mean, that's on Saturday, we have, uh, um, a company about to come in and go and give away a batch of fruit and vegetables, that'll be free of charge to the resident. I think we're going to put it in the house together, so that'll be on May the twentieth. We will put that in a newsletter for this month, as well as putting a newsletter for next month, also. Um, sort of quick, I hear this evening, so we will go to public education, help save that, away from trustee Greer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the appointment of Rick Neffens, for the position of Village of Burnham Fire and Police Commissioner.
Okay, this is, uh, um, Mr. Stephen, you've met with the police chief and, yeah, the chairman, so, Mr. Stephen is a resident here in the village of Burnham, so we appreciate you, uh, taking the offer, the fielding position, it's a non-paid position, uh, but, uh, most people do these type of positions, but dedication of the community, you know, of the capital community, and so, again, I'm sure the police chief, uh, gave you that inspirational, uh, excuse me, of what you did require to know, and I believe the first meeting will be, you know, the first one that, that April. And, uh, the information will be given, so those four, one, two, three. Okay, proceed.
I would like to make a motion to approve on the appointment of Mr. Greer Stephen, for the position of the Village of Burnham Fire and Police Commissioner.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve this appointment, and that's a great statement, but, uh, by the police commissioner. Hopefully, we have a second, please.
I second.
Second by trustee Hardy, will you take the role?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks, yes.
Okay, motion passed, proceed, trustee Greer, thank you. And congratulations.
Discussion of, consideration of, and taking action to approve or not approve on the block group, service, service agreement for the Police Department plate reader. Professional services and one-time purchase. Professional services, standard implications, fee is three hundred and fifty dollars, for quantity of four, one thousand and four hundred dollars. Professional service standard implementation, the fee is thirty. Professional service advanced implications, fee is seven hundred and fifty dollars, for two, um, one thousand five hundred dollars. Hardware and software products, felton, the price be two thousand and five hundred dollars, quantity six, fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. Subtotal for one year will be seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars. The subscription term will be for twenty-four months. Advanced returning total will be two thousand five hundred dollars, quantity of six, fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen?
Uh, fifteen thousand, I'm sorry. Building frequency, one-year invoice, broken into three payments. The first invoice is our, uh, professional service and implementation. The cost at fifty percent of the annual recurring subtotal will be seven thousand five hundred dollars. The second invoice at twenty-five percent of the annual recurring subtotal would be three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the third invoice, twenty-five percent of the annual recurring subtotal, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, for a total of twenty-five thousand and four hundred dollars.
And this will be, uh, a tool fighting, um, uh, investment, uh, to avoid, uh, with the Burnham Police Department. And, uh, so, as you know, there are, you know, many, many things that, uh, is going on in the communities we just need to. Here's a camera, by the way, and, uh, we just need to be, uh, uh, network with other towns, whatever they are, uh, to try to keep the crime down, keep our, uh, that's it.
Is this something new?
Any question from the board?
Is this something new?
Maybe new for Burnham. Are there any question?
Can you explain why we need them?
On the meeting closed to the public.
Discussion.
The meeting was closed to the public.
It'd be nice to hear you guys discuss why we need it.
Are there any question from the board? Any question?
Uh, where, where, where does that go with the, again?
Well, they'll be in, um, different locations, like on the main road.
Everywhere you enter town, right?
Be a big, uh, crime fight.
What was saying to you, man?
Yep.
So, we're all gonna be under surveillance, but nobody has any question, then why then it's a good thing?
I will ask for a motion to, uh, such a good, what you got?
I would like to make a motion on taking action to approve on the block group, any service agreement for the Police Department plate reader.
A second.
Twenty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, so we'll take the role.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks, yes.
Motion passed, thank you. Please proceed, trustee Greer.
And at some future time, we will come back and, and give a, give a report to the board, give a report to the public. Uh, so we do have a transparent, open process, but, um, just like sometimes, people say, oh, well, I am senior police, I am senior police. The police are watching you, even though you don't know they're watching you, so, the police are present.
That's the open.
Police are present, so, and what do you think, they're in community or not, they are?
Okay, proceed.
Uh, just recently, we've been hearing about coyotes, um, in the, in the, uh, attacking people, especially young children, so I, um, have an information on coyotes. Coyote, coyotes is a relative to the wolf. They are a potential danger to people and especially children. The majority of the tax, the majority of the tax incidents could be reduced or prevented through modification of human behavior. If you see a coy, uh, if you see a coyote remain calm, keep eye contact, slowly back up while leaving the area. Never run from the coyote, you may trigger its predatory responses and give it a reason to chase you. If you have any personal device, such as a whistle, a bell, or something, you can use it to chase away the coyote. Stop and stand still, be loud and very assertive, slowly back away, as I mentioned before, and never turn your back and run. Coyotes, they scream at night to inform their intruders of their presence and to protect its area. Coyotes communicate with each other by hawdy. If you hear a coyote crying, again, they are defending their territory, or they're warning other pets, other coyotes, to stay away. Coyotes can, can, they can jump and throw at six-foot fences, but they rather dig a hole or go under the gates, or go through the, uh, fence gaps. Coyotes, they hunt early in the morning and sunset. If they have pups, they may have to hunt around the clock. If you see a coyote and, uh, chase him away, he may draw a certain distance from you, and then he'll stop and be observing you. Some people say it's, and, and another word, it's stop, stalking you, but they want to make sure that you're leaving their territory. Coyotes, they hate the smell of vinegar, so when the, um, where the animal frequents, leave, leave open jar of vinegar for a few weeks, then they have to chase him away. See if you are a training, if interested, please leave your name and contact, uh, information at our receptions window. And as soon as we have enough people for a, a total, um, class, you will be contacted by either trustee Richardson or hus- or trustee Hodges. Congressman, Congressman Robert Kelly, she serves as United States Representative for the Second Congressional Dinner. She visits, she visited our village on March the twenty-first, and when she presented us with the check,
Yes, under twenty-six thousand.
For a hundred, hundred twenty-six thousand dollars.
Seven hundred ninety-five.
For the fire, what they do for the fire department. Um, if we have a major disaster or emergency situation should occur in our village, I want everyone to know that we are, we have resources, equipment, and, uh, we have a complete mobile command center, we have high-intensity vehicles, rescue equipment, if we have so, um, severe weather, we have spiders, we have emergency weather spiders, uh, and we have much equipment. So you are covered, you don't have to worry, the village of Burnham is totally covered. Be very observant of your surroundings. Uh, if, uh, when you're in a car, when you're in a home, when you go shopping, just be very surrounding of your surroundings. It's, uh, kind of a cruel world out there, so many things are happening. Please support the Burnham, um, businesses and our neighbor, in our village, they are here for you, so we have many businesses, and, and, um, and really, so please support them, thank you.
We have for that reporting, your information, in addition to the, uh, grant for the fire department to be used to house a new recruit, as well as training and, and find a safety gear for the employees, and, uh, Michelle, you were the advocate, so you, you got a person to answer for her.
And retention too, was the other thing they mentioned, retention to help keep the, officers.
Also, if you want to see the entire event, event, um, she presented the, uh, check, it's on YouTube, so you could just pull up Village of Burnham and, um, see the entire.
And other governments, um, we work in conjunction with other governmental bodies, you know, we kept bringing resources for Burnham, you know, whether it's the county, whether it's the federal, whether it's the state level, and, uh, we have a pretty good success, and so, despite what you might hear, I mean, Burnham is doing okay, Burnham is doing okay, and thank you, trustee Greer. Public Works and Building?
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Public Works have been out, uh, filling potholes, grading alleys, and also, uh, cold patching, and then, um, we're making a lot of progress on Crossin, Crossin Drive over by the waterfront club, uh, that's, that, uh, road was real bad, but, uh, it's coming along. And, um, also, National Public Works Week is May twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-third, and, um, we'll be doing a few things just to show our appreciation to Public Works and, uh, and American Public Works Association is proud to announce, the theme is connecting the world through public works, and, uh, that's all I had.
And, uh, since you mentioned the alleys, um, you know, sometimes you might hear of a pipe dream that, you know, I want to pay for all the alleys, and I want to get grass for there, and I want to get grass for there. Village of Burnham probably could put in for a grant tomorrow, give a million dollars, but you know what big requirement? And we'd have to match it with another bank, yeah.
Just like the mine truck.
And so, that's the issue, and so, um, a couple of grants that we've got, we didn't have to put in, that's what it grant, so, another thing, the, the alleys, um, if we put, let's say if we had the money, let's say if we did twenty alleys, and, right now, the water can go in the ground, if we put, if we put asphalt in the alleys, there's some of them, I mean, some of the water is gonna start going in the rods, and it's gonna start going in the yard, right now, it can go in the ground. And the water make, and the water reclamation district of greater Chicago does not want us to put any more water into the sewer. And if we had to put sewers in the alley, it probably cost twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars, and per sewer, I mean, you put in the alley, and we'd have to come back with him, with the train, it's just a forget about, tell him already.
Aren't there sewers in your alley? In your section of the neighborhood?
Um, so, um, so that, I mean, there's a lot that's tied to things, so, again, if you have a pipe dream, it, it sounds unrealistic, it's a chance of the idea, so, if, um, I mean, someday, if we get lucky, somebody hit the lotus a billion dollars, they start, that's just a little bit, and we can do some extra stuff. But in the meantime, we're not gonna catch you without your home, because, and we're not gonna do that. And the last thing is that if the alley were, I mean, the way we would like them to be, and we would have people speeding down the alley like they speeding down the street, you know, by a long way. We are gonna put more, I mean, traffic tolls throughout the, this year, to get rid of public works. People are driving too fast, boy, not being too fast, too fast.
I thank you, trustee Claybrooks.
Welcome.
For your report. Make ordinance resolution in planning in the absence of trustee Garcia, or has another member of the community to take that report, and then we will be, uh,
Discussion of consideration of taking action to approve or not approve on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero zero five A, Resolution for authorizing the ratification of the application and acceptance of a grant for the recruitment and retention of volunteer firefighters from F Y twenty twenty-one Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Program. Recruitment and retention of volunteer firefighters activity, R and R, I D, E M W dash twenty twenty-one dash F F dash zero two one one, zero two one four four dash, uh, two twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, so February twen- twentieth, February twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Again, there's a tie in, but the, uh, pilot grant is picking up, but you know, there's no question for the board.
This is like after the fact, right?
Yeah. Okay, proceed with that.
Uh, so our motion for us to, uh, to go forward with this, uh, to take action on this Resolution Number twenty twenty-three R dash zero zero five A.
Okay, there's a motion to vote by trustee Hodges to approve this resolution.
I'll second it.
Second by trustee Cap for the public.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks, yes.
Thank you, most, I have to say, about your heart.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to approve or not approve on the Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero zero six, Resolution for authorization, ratification, and acceptance of a grant for extraction tools, I D, E M W dash twenty twenty-one, F G dash zero three two seven eight, under fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Okay, the board have a question. I mean, another safety, uh, issue, I was in Denver.
So, I'd like to approve on a Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash R zero zero six. Our motion, oh, our motion for us to approve a resolution for number twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero zero six.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Richardson.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks, yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
That was one we also received there, yeah.
Yes. In discussion of consideration and taking action to approve or not approve of ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero zero two, ordinance creating community service officers and admitting chapter fifty, law enforcement article two, Police Department section sixty-two and session sixty-three eighty of the Code of Ordinance, Village of Burnham, Cook County, State of Illinois. Steve? I'm sorry.
I was, I don't know, how about Stephen?
Oh.
I hear you.
Stephen, I just wanted you to give a little bit of a word from the police department, about the, uh, about the, uh, about the community service officer, and how it can be amended.
Actually, once again, can't thank the mayor and the trustees enough for being, uh, proactive, instead of reactive, with the public safety, and this is another effort with the community service officers, this is gonna keep the police officers on the streets. These are more non-emergency responders, any type of, uh, lockout, dog complaint, motor assist, traffic control, helping like that. They will be there to do that, so the officers can run emergency calls, be on the streets more, and so this is that effort of doing that, and we look forward to, uh, this extra help with the Police Department.
Okay, thanks.
So, okay, go ahead.
I'm just here.
All right, cool. I make the motion for us to approve on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash O dash zero zero two.
Okay, uh, there's a, there's a motion to approve this, uh, this ordinance number, twenty twenty-three, B O dash zero zero two, so do we have a second, please?
Second.
Second by trustee Claybrooks, will you take the role, please?
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrooks, yes.
Uh, motion passed, thank you, proceed, trustee Hodges.
Discussion of consideration and taking action to approve or not approve on the business application by C C Tots Plague LLC, a venue to rent for events, the location will be twenty-fourth and Siskiastay Street, Burnham, Illinois, since oh, six, three, three, kids rental and events for one to five people.
Okay, so I assume that this was a group, yes, or could have represented it, I mean, that's stand up and give a look at it, maybe, maybe more, maybe.
Yes, uh, hello, everyone, how y'all doing? My name is Laquet Martin, um, I go by my little name, Monet. Um, right now, currently, I have a, uh, kids' party room, um, that's located in Park Boys, Illinois. Um, I'm looking to expand my business out. Um, I found a location that's next door to a daycare, which is perfect, because we, um, serve the same age range of children. Um, I also have a rental company, um, that I've had since twenty eighteen, so I do inflatable soft play, um, the first soft play company I created in two thousand and eighteen. Um, so now you see lots of companies, they all branch for me. Um, I am hoping that I can bring my business, um, to the Village of Burnham. Um, I give, uh, I do programs in the summertime for the youth, I also give jobs to teenagers, um, through, um, the local park districts, also through the local high schools, uh, they work with me in the summertime, they set up my inflatable, they set up my soft play areas. Uh, we also give back to the community every year, uh, we do Easter egg hunts, my, my characters come out, our bunnies, we go door to door. Uh, we also feed the elderly, um, I have a presentation that I sent to the clerk, um, that you can see different pictures and stuff that we do. Uh, we feed the elderly, we go door to door, we drop off grocery deliveries, um, that is a, a token of appreciation for our business being inside of the village. Uh, we also do events all year round, uh, for our children, uh, throughout the community as well, so I see you gave me an Easter egg thing, so that's, you know, I would like to collaborate with that, because I have a lot of tools, um, that we can use. Um, also, um, I have loads of recommendations from different businesses that I have collaborated with throughout the years, who also have brick and mortar locations as well. Um, I'm sorry to say, oh, so much, y'all. Um, my business, um, will only be geared towards, uh, children, that is all that I do. Um, we host, um, birthday parties for ages one to five. I have two businesses. I have my rental side, where we come out and we set up the play equipment. Then I have the site where you can have your birthday party with us, um, which consists of decorations, it consists of my characters coming out with the children. Um, it consists of our soft play areas and our inflatables. Uh, so that's exactly what you, um, will see, um, from my business, if you all allow me to your village.
Okay, so you saying that, uh, did you say you have a play area?
Yes, it's a soft play area. It's a soft play area, so it's climbing equipment, it's tunnels, it's.
Know what I'm saying, the equipment that they locate at?
At Twenty Four Fifty-Six, State Street.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, but, uh, but exactly where would it be located, inside?
Yes, it's inside, it's indoor, yes.
I'm thinking it's not a room that put on now.
No, it's indoor, yeah, it's an indoor party room.
Okay. Well, now, as far as the, um, the park, you know, there are other businesses in the area, huh? So, um, we think it'll be sufficient parking there for you that, that your business would not interfere with the others?
So that I, well, that I, that I would hope that it wouldn't, uh, interfere, um, so, um, I, I don't have the capacity, so it's only a thousand square feet. So right now I only have twelve hundred square feet, but I never do events that's over fifty, um, in attendance. Um, so I don't host for large events. So, um, majority of the people are bringing abundance of kids at the time, so one family could bring three, four children, so that's one car. Um, so that should take the parking down, um, because it's, it's not gonna be fifty parent drivers, you know? It, it might be one parent bringing, or one grandmother bringing all her grandchildren.
Like five or ten.
Yeah.
Like, we would, uh, just kind of prefer that the, uh, that the park would be only a property and not part of all this street in front of the resident's homes. And taking up their parking space, which sometimes is a complication, so, um, so we, I mean, that would just be a concern, so. Okay, that's it, that's it.
How does insurance work?
So, um, right now I have insurance, um, I still have a million dollar policy on both, um, sets. So I have a million dollar policy on my rentals, and I have a million dollar policy on my brick and mortar and park boards. So in the event that any children get hurt inside of my inflatable, which they shouldn't because ours are top exposed, so we have the small ones inside to fit the height, I mean, the height requirements for indoor. Um, so there are the smaller inflatables that will go inside of the establishment. So they are eight feet inflatable, so they're not tall. And they do not have tops on them. And then the soft play area is completely all foam and PVC plastic, um, that's wrapped around it. Um, so it's really nothing that they get hurt themselves with, but I do, uh, still have the insurance, um, in the event that something does happen.
Yeah, as long as you're concerned about safety, because a lot of time Burnham kids, we want our kids to work with you.
Yes.
Because we want you to be safe.
Yes, I got insurance.
And people bring them, so it's good.
What, what time, Ron, are you considering for your business?
We will be open between nine A M. And nine A M is, um, because sometimes we do daycare events, um, so they might come in the morning time. Um, the latest that we will, we, we will be open is eight P M. So the last party will be for four to eight. We won't be open past eight.
What about the, uh, the food? Is there a kitchen at the location or?
So no kitchen, um, so you have to bring in your own food. Um, so I always tell my customers to bring in warmers and coolers, um, so we don't house any, uh, food on our end. Everything is bringing in from the parents.
In that way, that would be no liability.
That's right, for the food, yes.
Little board, that was cool. Okay, proceed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion of consideration, taking action to approve or not approve. Discussion of consideration and taking action to approve on a new business to the application by C C Tots Play L L C. Uh, so I want to make a motion to, uh, approve or not approve on the new business application to C C Tots Play L L C.
Well, there's a motion on the floor by Trustee, uh, Trustee Hodges to approve this, uh, business operation.
I'm seconding it, I'm seconding it.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook, yes.
I can very, very. Okay, so that's everything on the order, but, uh, Simon, I'll find out, Trustee Cap?
I have nothing to add. Well, maybe I'll mention that, uh, we have a resident who's here, he reported some potholes on the bridge. I called the state, the state came right out, so thanks, Jerry, for letting me know. I checked him out before I called him, make sure they were, they were worthy of being patched, but I called the state and the state came out the same day. So they look good, they're holding up good, so I checked them again today. So thanks for letting us know.
So, Burnham?
On the way down the bridge, and I would have never noticed it, and I drive over it like.
So do you.
Mister Johnson, you drive over it every day. And you didn't notice it either. But they worked, one, if, one of them was getting pretty deep, so the state came out and fixed about three or four of them or something. Thanks to the state for coming out.
Thank you everybody for doing their part. Yes, Jerry? Um, how do you tell it, Trustee Richardson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, on April eighteenth, we're having our monthly COVID in Lahy leading, uh, vaccination clinic to be held here at the Village Hall from ten A M to four P M. Uh, the gift cards will be given out. And we're asking all veterans, we're still accepting pictures of you in your uniforms. Uh, they're just trying to do something special for the veterans. So if you have pictures, please drop them off here at the Village Hall.
Do you need it printed, or you'll take it online too?
I guess it could be online, it's a nice picture, you know, store it, if you have one, but.
And you know Lahy is the one that, uh, the service that helps you with your utilities, water, gas, and electric, so. And mine on April eighteenth.
Thank you, Trustee Richardson. And I want to mention again about the, about the lead survey, um, that we have to do. Uh, I mentioned at the last meeting, it has to be done on, uh, before April fifteenth or twenty twenty-four, so we have about thirteen months, you know, for us to be thinking about that, so. And we'll let you know exactly how, you know, that we're gonna do it, so. Okay, park recreation, Trustee Hodges.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm excited to announce and talk about, uh, our Easter egg hunt, our annual Easter egg hunt. Last year was really fun, a lot of kids had fun, and we're gonna do it again this year in partnership with, came back, kind of memory of the park district. Um, Village of Burnham, we'll do our Easter egg hunt, it's gonna start from, um, start at twelve o'clock, um, from ages, uh, two to twelve. And we're gonna have, uh, prizes, and it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be so, it's gonna be a lot of eggs, enough eggs for everybody. We'll bring candy, we have lots of fun, it's gonna be a good day. And bring the kids out, we'll be at Burnham Park at twelve o'clock. And have some fun.
And I spoke to a park director today, and I was, I was.
Where, uh, which one?
Can't be at both places at the same time.
Can't be split at the same time, but.
But we go Burnham Park first, Burnham first.
The flyer didn't list it as Burnham Park either, the flyer listed it as Burnham Play Lot. We've never called that the Play Lot, it's always been Burnham Park.
Where?
About the one in Green Bay, it's the one in Green Bay Pass that's school.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, they called it the Burnham Play Lot, which should have been Burnham Park.
Hundred Thirty-Eighth and Green Bay.
Right, it did just say, yeah, it does say Hundred Thirty-Eighth in Green Bay, but maybe it's.
Run a mind down the street, Jim.
What?
Run a mind down the street.
I know, it's always Burnham Park, it's always been Burnham Park.
We ain't gonna be all mind down the same, one with each other. I've been, I've been on, I've been on C M, I've been on C M P D.
This Saturday, please.
This Saturday, yep, Saturday at twelve o'clock.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the, uh, man, they couldn't get a taste of the kitchen? There's a man in prison, the lawyer, the best month.
I, I do have that one, let me make this announcement, okay?
Okay.
So one of our longtime residents passed away, I think it was Sunday. And I just, they just listed the information on the services. So he, Burnham George, we call him, he lived on Green Bay, his family, he was on the zoning board years ago, his uncle was on the police and fire commission forever, which Zaminsky was his uncle, lives on Green Bay. So he passed away, the service is Thursday morning, nine o'clock, it opens from nine to eleven, and the service is gonna be at eleven, and then after eleven, they're gonna take him to the cemetery. So I just pulled it up, so it's at Opitz General Home in Heggish?
Opitz.
Nine to eleven, and he was a longtime resident. He lived down the house next to the church, where Mother God churches on Green Bay, there's an empty lot, his house was next there. It was his mom and dad's house.
And he sold it a couple of years ago.
Oh, they just sold it too recently.
Trustee Cap, you said it's Thursday?
Thursday from nine to eleven, and the service is gonna be at eleven, and then they're taking him to the se- cemetery. I just pulled it up, Opitz Funeral Home, it's on their website.
We have a moment of silence, I'll wait there. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there any unfinished business?
There, there.
Yes. Yes. Um.
No, we didn't approve the minutes from the last meeting? We might have skipped that part, all right? I think we might have skipped there, right?
Oh, no, we did, um.
No, Travis said we skipped in there.
Oh, okay.
All right, tell, tell Stanley, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Um, okay. So do we need to go back to emergency order?
No, you just have to do it.
Yes, they were, yeah, so, um, I'll ask for motion to approve the, sorry for the oversight. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes that were, for the board lead that was held on May fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
May fourteen, November.
My fourteen, my, my, sorry, my fourteen, thank you, my fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
Carmella's seconded?
Yes, I do.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook, yes.
All right, thank you. And now, so we will have a motion to.
Make a motion to adjourn?
A motion on the floor for adjourn, can we have a second?
A second.
With the point take, with the point take roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook, yes.
A motion passed, being adjourned, thank you for coming. And one of you all missed time, Joe?
Um, so we'll be going, so I wanted to wait before I signed the lease to get in, until y'all tell me, yes, so hopefully.
A lot of people don't do that shit here, just handbrakes.